In accordance with Sections forty-five and fifty-three of the Planning Act nineteen ninety, as amended, this meeting of the Committee of Adjustment of the City of Toronto is called to order. Before I continue with my remarks, I'll make some introductions. First, our committee. On my far left, Ms. Natalia Popovic. On my immediate left, Mr. Dominic Gully. On my immediate right, Mr. Stan Kamorik. And on my far right, Ms. Sophia Ruddock. At the left end of this desk is our Deputy Secretary Treasurer, Ms. Barb Bartosik. And in front of me and at the far right end of this desk is Barb's support staff. My name is Dawn Taylor. I'll be chairing the proceedings today. The Committee of Adjustment considers applications for variances from the provisions of the zoning that applies to property, permission to extend or alter lawful, non-conforming uses, and consent to sever property to create new lots. We acknowledge the land we're meeting on is the traditional territory of many nations, including the Mississaugas of the Credit, the Anishnaabe, the Chipewa, the Haudenosaunee, and the Wendat peoples, and is now home to many diverse First Nations, Inuit, and Métis peoples. We also acknowledge that Toronto is covered by Treaty thirteen with the Mississaugas of the Credit. Committee of Adjustment public hearings are conducted in a hybrid in-person and virtual format. Some applicants and participants will make their submissions in person, and others will participate virtually by electronic means through WebEx, an online digital platform. The meetings are also streamed on the Toronto City Planning YouTube channel, and anyone wishing to view the hearing may watch on YouTube. Those who want to participate virtually and have registered in advance will be connecting with their computer, tablet, smartphone, or telephone, and have the option of participating via video or audio only. All virtual participants will automatically be muted on entry. When your item is called, you will be unmuted by the moderator, one person at a time. We ask that you also mute your devices until you're called on to speak. Those participating by video appearance will be temporarily upgraded to panelist when your item is being held. During this time, your camera will be enabled. You will only be visible during your five-minute allotted speaking time. At all other times, your video will be disabled, and you will be reinstated as an attendee. For both in-person and virtual participants, Committee of Adjustment staff will share presentations submitted in accordance with the written submission deadline. Those participating through WebEx are not allowed to use share screen or any other panelist controls during a video appearance. The host will remove you from the panelist role if you fail to respect this instruction. People attending in person today who want to receive a copy of the decision of the committee on an application must fill out a decision request card. And those participating virtually need to submit a written request for a decision by email. Please ensure that you include your name, address, and email address, because the Committee of Adjustment and the Toronto Local Appeal Body, T-Lab, will be sending notifications and appeal updates by email. If you do not agree with the decision of the committee, you may be able to appeal the decision to the T-Lab, or in some limited circumstances, to the Ontario Land Tribunal. However, the provincial government amended the Planning Act and generally removed rights of third parties to appeal Committee of Adjustment decisions. Only the applicant, the Minister of Municipal Affairs and Housing, specified persons and public bodies, as those terms are defined in the Planning Act, are permitted to appeal decisions of the Committee of Adjustment. Appeal instructions are set out at the bottom of the decision of the committee. Our hearing procedure is that I will call each item in the order listed on the agenda, with the exception of situations where the applicant has requested deferral, and I think we have a couple of those this morning, and we will dispense of those first before we get into the substantive part of the agenda. Where an applicant is uncontested, the applicant or agent may proceed with their presentation if desired. When the committee does not require a presentation, applicants are to advise the Chair should they wish to speak to the committee. The committee may ask questions and/or take the matter into committee for a decision. Each speaker, including the applicant agent, will be given a maximum of five minutes to address the committee. I will comment when you're reaching the five minutes. Any presentation or other materials you wish to submit to the committee must have been emailed in advance of this hearing. Staff and committee members cannot accept materials at the hearing. When addressing the committee, please clearly state your name and address. Please remember to confine your remarks to the matters outlined in the application. The applicant or agent will proceed first and will make a presentation to the committee on the application. Please note that the committee may not entertain revisions to proposals at the hearing today. The committee may decide to defer the application if substantially revised, to ensure the revised application is accurate, and that all those entitled to notice of the application are informed of the changes. Then, individuals either in support or opposed to the application will be invited to speak. Generally, we first call on speakers in the hearing room, and then those participating through WebEx. Committee members may ask questions of each speaker after they have finished their presentation. When all speakers are finished, the applicant agent has an opportunity to rebut only those issues that were raised by the speakers. This will mark the end of the discussion. The applicant will then be taken into committee for a decision. Before hearing our first item today, we require confirmation of the minutes of the last meeting, which I believe was July twenty-fourth. Could I have a motion to adopt those minutes?
Chair, I'll move that the minutes...
Thanks, Mr.
...of the July twenty-fourth hearing be approved as written.
Thank you, Mr. Gully. And there's a second here for that motion? Were none of us here? Okay, okay. Ms. Ruddock, thank you very much. All in favor? Okay, the minutes of the meeting held on July twenty-fourth have been adopted. I will ask firstly of our panel, are there any declarations of interest on any items in the morning agenda? None? And I ask the same question of staff. Are there any declarations of interest?
Mr. Chair, I have a conflict for item seventeen. I had a previous financial interest in this property.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Bartosik. And Madam Deputy Secretary Treasurer, have we received any requests for deferral by applicants from this morning's agenda?
For the morning, Mr. Chair, items three and ten.
Okay. We will deal with those momentarily. And Madam Deputy Secretary Treasurer, are there any files to be closed from this morning's agenda? Thank you very much. Okay, so we will first deal with the items for which deferral has been requested by the applicant, beginning with item number three, twelve sixty-six. Can't even read my own writing. Martin Grove Road. The agent is Mauricio Rogado. Is Mauricio in the room or online?
Good morning, Mr. Chairman.
Good morning.
My name is Mauricio Rogado. I'm the Principal Planner with Blackstone Development Corp. Our address is P.O. Box nine four three, Kleinberg, Ontario, L zero J, one C zero. We appear this morning to respectfully request a deferral in accordance with the planning report received with the staff. This will allow us a little bit more time to discuss the proposed minor variance, and as it correlates with the new provincial planning statement. Those are my submissions to you, Mr. Chairman, this morning, and of course, readily available to answer any questions.
Okay. Thank you, sir. A panel, any questions for Mr. Rogado? And Camille, is there anyone in the hearing room or on WebEx that wishes to speak to this item?
No, Mr. Chair.
Okay, then let's go into committee and make a decision on the request for deferral.
I'll move, Mr. Chair, to defer this matter to allow the applicant to have further discussions with community planning.
Thank you, Ms. Popovic. And is there a second here for that motion?
I'll second that motion.
Thank you, Mr. Kamorik. All in favor? Okay, item three has been deferred. Second item for which we have a request to defer is item ten, twenty-three Van Everie The agent is Matthew Swain. And I believe we have... Camille, do we have Evan Foster at home that wishes to speak to this as well?
Yes, so Evan Foster is going... is the new owner. He's going to be the owner in two weeks. Matthew is not online.
Well, he's not available. He's not available.
Evan is available. I'll get him online.
Mr. Swain?
Oh, no, this is Evan Foster.
You're the agent?
No, I'm the, I guess, future owner. Matthew is the current owner and agent listed, but we were told to attend the meeting today because we'll be taking possession of the property as of next Thursday, the twenty-first.
Okay, and what's your current address?
I live in downtown Toronto, nineteen oh six, three seventy-five King Street West, Unit nineteen oh six, M five V one K one.
Okay, thank you. Could you please explain your reasons for requesting deferral this morning?
We weren't the one to request the deferral, Mr. Chairman. My apologies. It was, I think, because the property might be changing hands is potentially the reason why the referral was requested, but I was not aware of that until just five minutes ago.
So you don't know precisely why this item is being requested for deferral?
I do not. My apologies.
Does that handicap our deliberations on this, Madam Deputy Secretary Treasurer, a request for deferral with no reasons? Okay. Personal reasons? Yeah, I think it says that, doesn't it? Yeah, yeah. Okay, a request for deferral for personal reasons. Is there anyone in the hearing room that came to speak to item ten, twenty-three Van Everie Street? No? And repeat what you told me about Mr. Foster again? Is he available?
I was saying that Matthew is the current owner, but he is not online, and Evan Foster is the future owner, which you had just spoken with.
The gentleman you spoke to?
Yes.
Okay.
And there's nobody else online to speak to this item.
Okay. Panel, any questions?
I was just wondering if the future owner has any objections to the deferral since it will cover the period of his ownership.
I thank you for the question. No objections.
So can we have a motion then?
I'll move for deferral for item ten, so that... I don't know. So we can hear it another time.
Okay. Okay, is there a second here for Mr. Kamorik?
I'll second that.
Thank you, Ms. Ruddock. All in favor? Okay, item number ten has been deferred for unknown reasons. Now we can revert back to the regular agenda. Item one, sixteen Kings Court Drive. This is a revised application. Purpose is to legalize and to maintain the existing detached dwelling and cabana. There are eleven variances requested. Item number ten has been revised. We have communication from the councillor to either defer or refuse this application. We have six opposition letters, and in additional materials, we have the revised application, an updated survey, and a waiver, and I think lots of other materials. And we have Mr. Milson acting as agent. Mr. Milson, if you could please make a presentation.
Thank you. Good morning, Mr. Chairman. Peter Milson, acting as agent, one ninety-two Lake Shore Road West, Mississauga. Before you today is an application for revision of previous approvals, and in fact, this is really a de novo hearing. The previous decision, A zero nine seven one seventeen E Y K, was approved on February eighth, twenty eighteen. Once the house was constructed, there was an order to comply issued. The order to comply identified several matters that needed to be addressed through a revised building permit, the most significant of which was the rear yard soft landscaping, or, in my opinion, the most significant. In preparation for this application, a very thorough review of the property was undertaken, as-built surveys, actual grading survey. We applied for a zoning review from the Buildings Department. The variances that are before you today are actually based on the zoning review. The reason why there's a zoning waiver is because we amended the variance request for the soft yard landscaping, and there wasn't sufficient time to get an updated zoning review. So all the detailed matters were reviewed by the Buildings Department. The variances can be divided into two categories, that are seven that relate to the buildings or structures, and four that relate to site plan issues. The building itself, and some might disagree with my comment here, the building itself was built, more or less, as was approved seven years ago. The setbacks of the walls are where they're supposed to be. The placement upon the property is where it was proposed to be. There were a series of changes that were undertaken during construction. They may have seemed small and immaterial at the time, but cumulatively and individually, many of them made changes to what was allowed to be done. So there were changes to grading. This has resulted in the main house being point four meters taller than what was approved. That's the house itself, floor-to-ceiling heights are identical as what was approved. It's just that the ground floor was raised by those point four meters, which then resulted in everything going up point four meters. Similarly, the cabana is built as it was approved, except for, again, it was raised by point three one meters, and I apologize, my letter of August eleventh, I stated that it was built to the same height as was approved. I apologize to the committee that wasn't a deliberate mistake. It was just too many files open on my desk at the same time, and I apologize to the neighbor from number eighteen about mischaracterizing that and his opposition. So I do apologize. There's also the eaves setback on the east west side of the property. I believe it's within the margin of construction error that we're off by a few inches, but it is a variance. In terms of the house, the approved FSI was point six five. It has been built out at point six. The coverage was increased from what was approved by the extension of the front stairs, by the addition of the side stairs, and by the basement extension at the rear, which all those three, that's what combined to increase the lot coverage, not the inhabitable space of the building. The lot depth and lot length variance occurred because during construction, the owners decided to extend the basement for an additional storage space, which is under their rear porch. So again, the house itself, what's above ground, would comply with length and depth. The basement doesn't. The... I mentioned the ancillary building. So the four landscaping variances, they relate to the front yard landscaping, the main front entrance and platforms. The front yard landscaping is a higher percentage than what was previously approved, but it is one point eight square meters less in area. The driveway width of six point seven is due to a poor transition between what's driveway and walkway, and that's for about five and a half meters of the sixteen-meter-long driveway. And finally, the rear yard soft landscaping, we acknowledge that was severely deficient. The proposal before you today is to increase it to forty-one point four percent, or ninety point six four meters, and this work is actually underway as we speak today. So it's not a promise that the owners will do something. It's something that they are doing. Of course, it's up to the committee whether you accept that or not. So with a lot of humility, we ask you to approve the variances, to allow for the rear yard soft landscaping minor variance that we're proposing. And a refusal would create certain onerous and very punitive measures onto the owners. They've sold the house. There's a closing later this month, so this could result in, you know, severe litigation. Okay, thank you, Mr. Chair.
Okay, thank you very much. Panel, any questions for Mr. Milson?
Yeah, I have a few, Mr. Chair, which I'd like to ask now rather than waiting if there's other speakers. There were no photos submitted by the applicant, so I'm going to go by photos that were submitted by the neighbor.
I believe photos were submitted.
I haven't seen any. Staff, do we have any photos from the applicant?
Yeah. Let's go to try.
Anyway, the photos that I was relying on were submitted by the neighbor from number eighteen. I'm assuming they are photos of that backyard. And to me, that doesn't look like permeable pavers that's there now in your site plan and your revised site plan, where you actually show what's going to be hardscape and what's going to be softscape. You're mentioning permeable pavers. That doesn't look like permeable pavers, and perhaps you could address that. That's the one thing. Then the other issue is, you're saying that this is being removed now. It would have been helpful to have photos showing that it's actually being removed.
I have a photo. I know we're not supposed to do new materials today, but literally, this is a photo from yesterday.
Okay.
It does show the permeable... the pavers removed and dirt, which will be covered by sod. I am told by the owners that all of the pavers on the property, front and back, are permeable pavers.
Okay, well, let's address that by... if I can ask staff to... if you can find the photos that were submitted by the applicant, please put those up. If you can't, then please put up the photos that were submitted by the neighbor from Yeah, you have to scroll down. The one that shows a pool and the hot tub. No, it's from the neighbor.
Yeah, those are the photos I submitted.
Okay, they're listed under the submission from the neighbor for some reason. So are you saying those are permeable pavers?
That is what the owners have told me, yes.
Really? Okay. And those are being removed?
So if you look at the picture of the rear yard, and if you follow it with the site plan, revised site plan, there is sod being placed along the northern edge of the property, which is at the side abutting number eighteen. Then it proceeds straight across the entire rear yard, roughly in line with the corner of the little curb that you see in the middle, and it goes across, so the area where you see the table and chairs near the barbecue, that will all be sod. So basically, everything to just orient... to the east of the in-ground spa, pretty well, everything will be sod.
Yeah, I mean, that's according to the site plan that you submitted most recently.
Yes.
Which I can see that, and that's why it surprised me that, so the area that where the table is, you're proposing to be sod. So what's being proposed is everything around, surrounding the house essentially would be sod.
Correct.
Okay.
There's a small walkway remaining along the... what leads to the driveway, but that area adjacent to number eighteen is going to be mainly sodded.
Just wanted to clarify that, because as I say, I couldn't find any photos from you, and it just... what I see in those photos doesn't appear to be permeable pavers, but that's comments.
Panel, any other questions?
Sure, I have a couple of questions.
Yeah.
So, Mr. Milson, you've indicated to us, and it's gone on the record, that that area shown on the Rowi site plan and the area that you described today will be converted to soft landscaping.
Yes.
I had a question with respect to three and four, life and depth. Did I understand you correctly that it does not change anything with respect to above grade, but that length and depth only applies to the basement?
In your package, somewhere in your package, is the zoning review that was submitted dated... dated July twenty-third, twenty twenty-five.
Yeah.
Item number ten, building depth, and there's a note at the bottom from the Plan Examiner. "The enclosed area, bracket, storage, under the rear deck is not considered a permitted encroachment, therefore included in building length and depth measurement." If you look at the basement site plan, you see a storage room off of the main basement that's under what I call the rear porch. That is something that was added during construction. So that's, you know, to the layperson, it seemed like no big deal. We're not doing anything above ground, but technically, it does trigger two variances.
So you confirm?
Yes.
Really? Thank you.
Anything else, panel? Is there anyone in the hearing room that came to speak to sixteen Kings Court Drive? No? Would you like to come up to the podium? Give us your name and address, and then talk to us.
Good morning, Mr. Chair. Members of the committee, my name is Peter Kreuzner. I live at eighteen Kings Court Drive, the property that abuts sixteen Kings Court Drive to the north. I'm here today to urge you to reject the application for the minor variance regarding the height of the cabana at sixteen Kings Court Drive. The reason for this is the variation is not minor. The applicants now argue that the variation is minor because the as-built cabana is five point oh eight meters in height, while the previously approved height by this committee was four point seven seven. What this doesn't... if we factually accept that this is the height that they've built to, five point oh eight meters, that time of approval, it was very clear that the cabana should be measured against the approved grade, not a final post-construction grade that has been artificially raised. What the applicant failed to mention is that the cabana is constructed on three... zero point three meter piles, and more significantly, the rear yard elevation at sixteen Kings Court has been raised by zero point four two meters during construction. According to the records posted at the committee, this committee's... According to the records posted at the committee of this committee's website and about this property on August the sixth, the plan shows that the grade at sixteen Kings Court Drive is one one six point nine three, while the same plan shows eighteen Kings Court grade at one one six point five one. This is not trivial difference. In fact, on two separate orders to comply issues that the city posted against sixteen Kings Court, one in September twenty nineteen and one in November twenty twenty-four, the city specifically noted this. The grading plan shows the proposed elevation in this area to be slightly lower than the elevation at eighteen Kings Court Drive. I lived there. I can attest to that fact that prior to the construction, the grade of sixteen Kings Court Drive at that point was indeed equal to or slightly lower than that at Kings eighteen Kings Court, and it's demonstrated in my written submission. The result is that the as-built cabana may, as a technical point, be only slightly above the four point seven seven of which was approved. The actual height from the approved grade is at minimum about half a meter higher than anything that was approved, and is a full one point five meters higher than the bylaw permits. This is substantial and a material deviation of the bylaw, not a minor one. In this respect, I believe the applicants are attempting to offer the appearance of having satisfied the letter of the law while continuing to violate, I believe, the spirit. The variance is not minor and by any reasonable reasonable interpretation. Second point is the adverse impact is inconsistent with the general intent and purpose of the zoning bylaw. The maximum height restriction for ancillary structures is set out in the bylaw is designed to protect neighboring properties from precisely the kind of adverse effects that have occurred here, namely the loss of privacy, increased shadowing, and intrusive overlook. The as-built cabana at five point oh eight meters in height and further elevated by its construction on piles and raised grade has resulted in exactly the adverse impacts the bylaw seeks to prevent. The structure now allows direct views into our house in the back and backyard, causing a significant loss of privacy and enjoyment from our family than we had before. The increased height has also led to excessive shadowing, depriving our rear yard of sunlight, and has fundamentally altered the use and enjoyment of our outdoor space. Additionally, the installation of two large industrial chimneys on the roof, never shown on any approved plan, serves as noisy exhaust vents for the pool and hot tub equipment and extend above the already excessive roof pitch, not just the roof, they extend above the pitch. This further intensifies the negative effects on our property. Permitting this variance would defeat the clear objectives of the bylaw, which are to ensure that ancillary structures do not impose undue burdens on adjacent properties such as ours. In conclusion, on these grounds, I respectfully request that the committee reject the application for a minor variance regarding the cabana height at sixteen Kings Court. If however this committee is inclined to approve this variance, I urge you to do so only on condition that the height of the roof is lowered to comply with the bylaw and that the chimneys are removed from the roofline, and this pool equipment is vented through the rear wall, the west side of the cabana. Thank you for your time. Thank you for consideration. Any questions?
Yes, any questions for Mr. Kretzner, panel?
I have one, if I may.
Yep.
Um, are are since you live next door, have you seen the backyard being landscaping being removed at this point?
I have.
You have?
Yes.
So that that is taking place?
Yes.
I just wanted to confirm. Okay.
It has happened. It's happening as we speak.
Okay.
Thank you.
Anything else from anyone? Comments, questions? Okay. Um, thank you, Mr. Kretzner. Camille, do we have anybody on?
There is one more person in per-.
Okay.
Who would like to speak.
Good morning. My name is Helen Kreuzner, and I am the neighbor at eighteen Kings Court Drive, which shares a boundary with sixteen.
Uh, we are, we we limit participation to one occupant of a of a house, and we've already heard from Mr. Kretzner.
Um, I'm sorry. Um, in the notice that we were given about the hearing, it said nothing about that incident or fact, and it also has eleven variances, so we were going to speak to 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 a different variance.
Well, you you should have sorted that out and maybe taken two and a half minutes each or something, but we've heard a full five minutes from the perspective of your home, and we we can't, we can't listen to you. We we've heard from eighteen Kings Court.
Could I request then for future hearings that that information is provided prior to the hearing in the um public hearing notice?
Unfortunately, we can't put everything in the notice, but it is on our website.
Could I speak on behalf of another neighbor who is um seriously ill? Both are quarantining because of illness.
We would need their authorization for you to speak for them.
I think it's been. Adam was going to get an um request or a email from them for permission to speak on their behalf. I don't know if Adam.
We we don't, we don't have that.
Sorry.
Okay, I, it was emailed this morning, which is pretty late for us because we require information.
A- Adam um only told us that this morning, and therefore, that's how we were able to get the um permission from the patients.
You have to tell us who you're speaking for, and you're only speaking on their behalf.
Right.
Not from your perspective.
Right, okay. It's um for the Spears um family who are quarantining, and they are the um residents of fourteen Kings Court Drive.
Is that Dr. Spears?
Yes.
Yeah. I did read his letter. We did.
Could I just take a moment to speak to another neighbor before I begin, if this is our one and only opportunity to speak? We have a third.
Who who are you consulting with?
Another neighbor. Is would that be all right? Right. Okay, so um so I'll continue on behalf of Dr. Spears and Mrs. Spears. Is that? Okay.
Okay.
So I have an authorization from Richard Spears, that's it.
Thank you. So my name is Helen Kreuzner, and I'll be speaking on behalf of Dr. and Mrs. Spears, who have also submitted and um uh along with this agree with our um submission. Um, the property of sixteen Kings Court Drive has recently removed some pavers, a little gravel, and replaced with sand. They now claim that this change increases the backyard soft landscaping from twenty-seven point seven percent to forty-one percent. However, this still falls well short of the fifty percent minimum required by the zoning bylaw and the commitment made by the owner in an email to neighbors January the thirty-first, twenty eighteen, stating, "In completing the backyard landscaping, we will ensure that we continue to adhere to the fifty percent soft coverage requirement and ensure all drainage systems adhere to code." The Planning Act requires that a variance must be minor. The committee must look at the totality of the circumstances, not just the most recent changes. Even with these last-minute efforts, the variant remains major, not minor. The property owners are attempting to comply with the letter of the law, but they continue to violate the con- the spirit and intent. The calculation of soft landscaping at sixteen Kings Court Drive is misleading. It includes the dimensions of a pool as if it were a permeable surface. In reality, the pool is a concrete structure and does not absorb water. During heavy rain and extreme weather events, the pool will reach maximum capacity and overflow. When that happens, only about thirty percent of the backyard remains as true permeable surface to absorb stormwater. The risk of stormwater runoff is hypothetical. There is a one-foot grade differential between the backyard paving of sixteen Kings Court Drive and the property of eighteen Kings Court Drive, as confirmed by a City of Toronto order to comply issued to the owners of sixteen Kings Court Drive on September the thirteenth, twenty nineteen. The backyard slopes directly towards our property. When the majority of the lot yard is paved or covered by a pool and only a small sliver is grass, it is inevitable that excess water will flow onto a property during a heavy rain. The City of Toronto's official plan prioritizes climate resilience and better stormwater man- management. With the increasing frequency and intest- intensity of extreme weather events, a backyard that isn't almost entirely impermeable is inconsistent with these priorities and with the intent of the zoning bylaw. The character of our neighborhood is defined by green, permeable backyards with a heavy balance of hard and soft landscaping. The situation at sixteen Kings Court Drive is an outlier and undermines the character and environmental health of our community. For these reasons, I respectfully ask the committee to reject the application for a minor variance regarding backyard soft landscaping at sixteen Kings Court Drive. If the committee is inclined to approve the variance, we request that it be conditional on the owners of sixteen Kings Court Drive constructing a substantial impermeable barrier at the property boundary to prevent stormwater runoff from spilling onto our property. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Okay, thank you. Uh, panel, any questions or comments? I'll just have one. This committee does not deal with drainage issues. Drainage drainage mitigation matters are dealt with at the building permit stage, so your 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 comments are received, but we can't implement them. That's another step in the process?
I understand through the order to comply.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, is there anyone else, Camille?
Morning.
Good morning, Mr. Chair and the committee members. My name is Victoria Sharp. I live at twelve Kings Court Drive, and um I'm just going to uh put a couple of overall statements around.
One second. Sorry to interrupt you. You put sixteen Kings Court Drive.
I live at twelve Kings Court Drive.
Okay.
To speak to sixteen Kings Court. Yeah. Okay, all right, thank you. There's a number of points here that have been moving very quickly in the last twenty-four hours and to do with the soft landscaping and coverage, uh which um is relevant to, I think, a bigger strategy that the city is looking at and its concerns over stormwater containment and the impact that it has on people's homes, flooding, insurance, and other things. So while I see your point that it isn't within all of your purview, your decisions do have a bigger impact, uh and I think that that's probably some of what the councillor, Morley, was referring to as um a concern. There are still orders to comply that um that are not have have not been addressed. Uh, we're seeing a process whereby the committee has not given the opportunity to look at the full range of variances, because what is happening is that you get one set of variances, then they're approved, and then then they are exceeded, and then they come back and ask for another set of variances, which might look to be small, but relatively speaking are large. And I think a concern that I'm, I wonder if the committee has, that it doesn't give you the opportunity to make an appropriate broad decision on the overall impacts, is what I would call creeping um changes to variances. Um, so therefore, I think that the whole presentation um by Mr. Milchon, that this be small variances is actually not really an accurate setting of the context. Uh, you've heard about the issues about building height. Um, I don't even know why there isn't a variance issue with the uh cabana on the north side, as you can see that from the photographs, that um the the bending of the eaves trough in order to get round the tree, uh so therefore, it sits immediately on the boundary, and I would have thought that that was not acceptable. Uh, I will say that uh in my note, in my letter to you, that Spears at number fourteen Kings Court uh had to spend money on um fixing up their driveway, which admittedly, the cost was shared with um the owners at sixteen, uh but for work that they would never have to have done, but for the fact that it was undermined, and there is still undermining uh alongside their garage, so that there are things that are still not um have been caused that would not have happened if there'd been appropriate processes. And I believe the building is actually not situated appropriately on the lot, um and it is actually asymmetric, so there was another issue that I think was to be looked at. I have a question I ask, perhaps if this could be um considered, because I would say a deferral would be helpful, to understand um exactly how a larger front drive reduces the amount of soft landscaping that therefore is required in the front yard, because um it's quite clear that the driveways um are not semi-permeable. Those are very tight slabs, uh there's very small cracks, and I've seen rain just pour off the driveway and others uh straight into the street, so that it is not um the fact that you can enlarge your driveway and reduce a requirement. Plus, the front steps also are a variance, adding to this hardscape covering that is pretty extensive. So I I don't know why that kind of doesn't work, and I, as I say, there are orders to comply. Um, so um I don't think we want to um, you know, be difficult or anything, but it would be helpful if there was a deferral, that we could get confirmation that uh the underfloor heating that was under the slabs that are being pulled up now.
You have about ten seconds?
Thank you. Um, also be sorted out rather than just being pushed by quickly, because it would nice to know that underneath those pavers, it really is um permeable. So thank you very much for your time, committee.
Thank you. Panel, any questions or comments for the speaker?
Thank you, Speaker, for um making good and comprehensive presentation to the to the committee. I was wondering, um, can you kindly advise or confirm for me, how much wider is the driveway than is required?
Um, it's.
In terms of the variance that they're requesting?
It's two point nine five, I think.
Sorry?
I think it's two point nine five. I don't remember the exact numbers. Um, it's anyways, it's got, it's gone wider than it was was set.
Perhaps the agent can answer that question.
Yeah, yeah, okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. You take your seat. And uh, Mr. Milksen, if you can come up and rebut what you've just heard?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, Mr. Kretzner's uh comments about uh the cabana, uh there are no industrial chimneys on the cabana. There are metal uh chimney vents and flues uh for the pool heater uh and and air intake, I suppose, so it's not industrial. It's, you know, what you would see on normal residential properties. Um, I I questioned the comments about overlook and loss of privacy. There are no windows in the cabana facing uh number eighteen. The windows in the cabana are primarily uh facing south towards the uh this property's pool area. That is the purpose of the cabana, to to support the the pool area. There are some, there is some glazing in the garage door, uh but I I don't see how that could be construed as as really overlook. Uh, number, um, the neighbors from number fourteen, the the Spears, um, I know that they're, they've been upset about the side yard setback. That was a variance that was granted uh originally of point nine meters. It was constructed to point nine one meters, but today, under the bylaws it is today, that would no longer be a variance. Uh, so that's uh that's one thing. Um, the comment, uh, the the lady from number twelve uh made, just to be clear for members of the public, we are not seeking variances to variances. We seek variances from the bylaw. That's why this is like a brand-new hearing. Uh, so every variance is against the bylaw. So every variance is against the bylaw, not against what was constructed. The shortfall in front landscaping is one point eight square meters from the bylaw. So it is a shortfall. I suggest it is very small. And I'm happy to answer any, any further questions.
Panel, questions, comments? Mr. Kummer?
I want to come back to the rear yard land, soft landscaping. It's just, this seems like a very last-minute, impromptu submission. And I'm just looking at it from a functionality perspective, and I don't know if it makes sense in my mind. You're proposing to put sod, existing barbecue, and then you've got sod area. Is a barbecue gonna stay there? I mean, that...
Pardon me?
Are you gonna, is a barbecue going to be relocated? You're proposing soft landscaping around the area where you'll be exiting anything from the house as opposed to further in the back? Like, it just... Help me try to rationalize the plan, because it doesn't make sense.
I understand your point. This is what the area that was chosen. The owners of the property, because the property is under contract to be sold, have been consulting with the new purchasers. And this is the solution the new purchasers agreed to and wanted. The sod to be closer to the house and to maintain the pavers closer to the pool. So the owners are caught a little bit between a rock and a hard place because they have to consult with the buyers as to what they will accept. So this is, this is what they've, the two parties have come up with. It is soft landscaping. It does address some concerns about runoff to the south and to the north, to those two properties, by placing sod closer to the north and south lot lines to potentially capture stormwater runoff. Certainly on the north side, the driveway has a pronounced grade change from the rear to the front of the house with water draining down the driveway towards the road. So between the sod being placed there and the flow of water, that should be beneficial to number eighteen. And I also want to note, this is one step in the process. Should you approve this application today? The building designer is preparing new drawings to be submitted for a revised building permit. They have to satisfy the buildings department about all the matters that were identified in the order to comply. They will have to provide a new grading and drainage plan, again, which will have to be to the satisfaction of the city. And that all will then have to be inspected and deemed to be in accordance with whatever approved plans there will be, and only then will the order to comply be lifted. So what, if you were to approve this today, that is not the end of the process. We don't just wash our hands of it and say, okay, we're done. There's still a number of steps that have to be done. And the owners will be contractually obliged to continue paying for that process to the new, to the new owners, or just, you know, continue the process until the city is satisfied and the new owners can then accept that the property is pre and clear.
Okay, that's, that's helpful. Because I guess, not knowing that ownership was about to change hands here, I was trying to struggle with, how do we tie you to ensure that these landscaping changes actually take place?
Well, as, you know, one of the neighbors has confirmed, they are underway as we, as we speak. And it's not just throwing dirt on top of the pavers, as I know some have done in the past, and placed sod on top of pavers to make it look good. They actually have excavated, removed the pavers, removed the substrate for the pavers, put in, you know, about a foot of soil to fill those, those new holes. And on top of that soil, the new sod, real sod, not fake grass, real sod, will be placed.
Okay, Ms. Rannick?
Yeah, so I just had a question. So you're relying on the approvals from the previous decision, right? I mean, you refer to it as relitigating the ancillary issue in your response letter to the complaint?
Well, the house is built.
Right.
The house is built, and in large measure, it was built in accordance with the previous approval. There were changes that occurred. We're trying to address them through this application.
I understand that, but you're not asking, it's not a de novo hearing, because you're relying on the previous consents. In fact, it's what's one of your defenses to the concerns raised by the resident of fifteen Kings Mill. So it's not a de novo hearing. You're relying on the previous consents that were given, and now you're raising additional variances.
Well...
And I think you were a bit dismissive of the comment from the neighbor that said that you're adding on to it. I know you're using the bylaw as the, as the, as the line, but the point, I think, that she was trying to say is that you never brought all the variances that you're requesting initially to the, in the first application, and now you're bringing additional ones that aren't there. And therefore, the committee in approving the previous variance didn't have the opportunity to look at the totality of the variances that you're asking for in totality for this project.
I completely agree with you. The previous application had different grades, different resulting heights. That isn't what they built. They built, they changed it during construction. That's why we're here today. So it's not that, you know, it, there were changes made, whether they were, you know, wise or not wise decisions, but they were made. We are where we are today. And I can, you know, I've attempted to explain how the differences are, and it's up to you to decide whether they're minor or major. But I suggest to you that overall, the house is pretty close to what was originally approved. And I believe it should be approved, not your concern, but it will be onerous and punitive if it is not.
If I can ask one more. Just, we don't have the benefit of the orders to comply in our consideration, so perhaps if you could elaborate on what those are?
I believe, I certainly saw the order to comply on the Information Centre website. So there are seven items on the order to comply. One is related to the foundation wall and its distance above grade. That's strictly a building code issue. That will be rectified. Item two was about the rear yard soft landscaping. Item three was about changes to the grading and requiring a new lot grading plan. Item four was that originally the cabana was supposed to be a garage and that the driveway would no longer allow for a car to be parked within the garage because a step was put in, in front of the cabana. But that structure was converted from being a garage to a cabana. So we're, we're addressing, that in and of itself is not any kind of a variance, but we're going to revise the plans to show that they're appropriate. There was a side, the side door on the north side to the driveway was originally supposed to be one step above grade. But because of the changes to grade, it required a full, proper landing and steps. So that was an incursion. That's something that was not shown on the building permit plans. So the revised plans for a revised permit will have to include that. Again, that in and of itself, those side steps, they do not create any kind of a variance. Number six was pier footings and a concrete slab being constructed on the north side. I believe that that's also related to the steps. And number seven, a concrete slab with foundation at the front porch and, and steps. So really, with, with the exception of the soft landscaping, most of these issues will, will be addressed simply through a revised building permit submission and satisfying the buildings department that it's in compliance with the latest drawings, as you see them, and that it complies with the building code.
I just, I'm gonna invite Mr. Gully. He has some comments or questions. I just want to ask one. I'm just looking at the February twenty eighteen decision, and I don't see a reference to the pool. I'm presuming the pool was constructed post-approval, like in the last seven years?
For the pool. Was the pool part of the original? Pool was part of the original proposal.
But it didn't trigger any soft landscaping issues at that time?
No, I believe the, the application that was before the committee, seven years ago, showed the pool and showed sod. It did not show extensive pavers. It may have shown some pavers, but the pool plus the sod would have satisfied the fifty percent at that time.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Gully?
Thank you, Chair. So, Mr. Milchin, I think you've answered several of the questions that I have had, that I had. But in turn, for my own notification, there is a process here. This is actually a new application, even though the structure's already built, the site has been developed. From here, should this committee give you approval, you still have to go to the committee, sorry, you have to go for a building permit. You have to go for a full building permit. As part of that building permit process, you indicated to that law, new law grading plans have to be submitted.
Yes.
New law grading plans have to be approved by development engineering, that section, that deals with water runoff and that aspect. And so it's, it is an application de novo. The application that you have before us today is a new application. What's happened was that in twenty eighteen, I actually was sitting, a member of the committee at that time, that committee approved an application. That application was then, that committee decision was then used to apply for a building permit during the building of that site, certain changes occurred. It occurred, in some instances, it could be measurements. In other instances, some different changes like occurred in this application. But in actual fact, it's a new application, and the process is like we're dealing with a new application, even though, even though the home is there. With respect to privacy and oversight, I think you answered the question for me on that, on that issue. And with respect to the reduction in the front yard, soft landscaping, reducing it by one point eight, does that relate to the variance with respect to an increase to the driveway from six meter to six and a half meters?
So what was approved in twenty eighteen, forgive me, I just have to find the... So in twenty eighteen, the front yard landscaping was proposed as fifty-nine percent. But fifty-nine percent was fifty... Fifty-nine percent was fifty-seven square meters. Now it's seventy-two point four five percent, but it's fifty-two point seven one meters. So one point eight, well, it's a one point eight meter deficiency compared to the bylaw. It's several meters less than before. The front steps were enlarged, were made wider and, and longer. That in part triggered the lock coverage variance that's requested that is bigger than the lock coverage than what was approved eight years ago. Mr. Gully, I'm getting old. I've lost my train of thoughts. We're discussing front yard soft landscaping, right?
I think what you left off was that because you added a larger or wider steps.
Too many on. I always leave mine on. Maybe I shouldn't.
From there on, Mr. Milchin, so that reduction in the front yard of one point eight meter, a square meter, that resulted as other design and construction details, such as widening of the steps? Is that correct?
Yes, yes.
And what other?
Well, it's, you know, for one point eight square meters, you can take your pick what, what triggered it. The larger landing, the wider steps, the, you know, the on paper wider driveway, because there isn't a clear delineation between walkway and driveway. It's all one surface. But it, the deficiency vis a vis the bylaw that we're seeking a variance to today is for one point eight square meters.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Panel, any other questions or comments? If not, let's go into committee and have a discussion and a motion.
Yeah, I'll kick off the discussion, just sort of adding to some previous discussions that have taken place with regards to how do we enforce the landscaping taking place? We can't request a deposit. So if anyone is considering a motion to approve, if we could consider tying it to the work being done prior to issuance of new building permit or something like that?
So Chair, if I can respond to that, I think I asked Mr. Milchin to repeat for us the fact that the area was being converted to soft landscaping, and I think it's on the record. I don't know whether we can apply a condition, but indeed, that, that's the record, the record will show that the question was asked and that it would be lands, soft landscaping, and that the application that, for building permit, the plans will show that it is soft landscaping, and that's the building permit that they should apply for, showing that, and whatever the committee approves, if it approves the variances today.
Yeah, okay, that, that's fair. I mean, in a different... Yeah, okay, that that's fair. I mean, in in a different application, I would try to tie it to the site plan, but in my view, that site plan doesn't make sense. So I don't want to tie it to that. I think I take some solace in the fact that a new grading plan would have to be submitted, one that perhaps might make more sense. So I'll leave it at that.
Okay. Ms. Reddick, any comments? No? Ms. Popovich?
So, Mr. Chairman, I am prepared to speak on this item. Although I don't recall all the details back in twenty eighteen, because I am also aging as Mr. Milchin. But certainly at that time, reviewing that application, I I felt it was a prop, a good planning application and I certainly supported the approval of it. Today, I'm dealing with a totally different application. So whatever happened in twenty eighteen happened in twenty eighteen. Today, I'm dealing with a series of variances that relate to a new application. And I'm looking at it as an application de novo. I'm not referencing it to anything that was approved in twenty eighteen. And when I review this application, in my view, the in totality, the application in totality looking at the individual variances and cumulatively, I believe that this application is still a good application. Notwithstanding and but carefully listening to the comments made by the neighbors, which were all good comments. They spoke about degree of oversight, oversight, they spoke about they spoke Bit of a struggle trying to do this, but each of the, each of the neighbors, it seems, their but at the end of the day, when I look at the specific location in the Kingsway, in this neighborhood, in a built up urban environment, a certain degree of privacy and and oversight may be allowed, but to a certain extent, I don't think those are issues that affect the application. On the new application, the revised application, I move that the application be approved. And I believe there are no forestry conditions associated with it. Move approval with no conditions.
Thank you, Mr. Gully. Is there a second here for Mr. Gully's motion?
Do you want to try this one? It's flash, yeah. I'd, I'd be willing to second that, but I would like to make an amendment. I would like to propose that what is to be hardscaped in the rear actually is permeable pavers. I'm assuming this is not going to be a hardship for the applicant if they claim that they already have permeable pavers. So I would just like to add the caveat to that approval that we're approving it as amended, which basically means the forty-one point nine percent coverage. But the hards, hardscaping component be made of permeable pavers.
Mr. Gully, are you amenable to that amendment?
Chair, I, I'm not clear. If you can just repeat it one more time.
That some of the hardscaping in the backyard permeable pavers be utilized for that hardscaping. I can't tie it to the site plan because I don't think the site plan makes sense. But they're saying that's, that their current hardscaping is permeable pavers. So all I'm saying is, let's put it in writing.
So what the hard landscaping, what is supposed to be hard landscaping, be actually permeable pavers?
Which then also, I believe, addresses as best as we can the neighbors concerned about water runoff, et cetera. And since the applicant is stating that they already have permeable pavers, that I'm just asking that that be codified in writing.
Chair, even though I believe that they have to abide by the site plan, should this committee approve the variances by the site plan that's submitted to building permit, with some reservation, I'll, I'll go along with that because I believe the application is a good application. And even though it may cost some amount of money to do that, but I will go through with that amendment. I'll, I'll support that.
Okay, thank you.
So on the revised application with the amendment that the hard
Or at least a portion of it. I don't think you can do all of it because
But but a portion again, what percentage of it? Chair, we're back. We're now in the discussion. Should we bring it back to the committee?
Yeah, let's, let's do that, yep. Yeah, let's, let's continue this discussion.
So I'm
I mean, I, I don't want to put it undue
Hardship.
Hardship because, I mean, obviously, the structural areas around the pool can't be permeable pavers. But if the main flat hard surface, if, I mean, in this site plan, it is saying existing permeable pavers. So all I'm trying to say is that that area where pavers are to be used, they should be permeable as noted in the site plan.
Well, if there are any pavers on the site plan that are referred to as permeable, they have to. But I don't want to add all hard surfaces to be permeable. I'm looking back at my own experience at the city and you really depend on the integrity of that site plan. That site plan has to be, the site has to be developed in accordance to that plan. And I believe the amount of attention this application has received from the Building Department, I believe that the inspectors will be there to ensure that the site plan is developed in accordance to, that the site is developed in accordance to the site plan that was approved. So I'd like to go back into the motion. I think I want to make a similar motion, Chair. I, I think that
Can I make a suggestion?
Sorry?
Can I make a suggestion for the wording?
Sure.
The hardscaping shown on the revised site plan in the rear yard shall be maintained as permeable pavers.
That's the, the problem that I have, whether we should make a covering blanket statement like that.
Well, it's as shown on the site plan.
The ones that show on the site plan is permeable, I don't have a problem with that.
That's what she's suggesting.
Is that what she's suggesting? Not all hard surfaces.
No, it says the hardscaping illustrated on the site plan as permeable pavers in the rear yard shall be maintained.
Absolutely, I can do that.
Okay, Mr. Kamara, are you prepared to second that? Okay, so we have a motion that's been seconded, all in favor. Opposed? So the motion carries by a vote of three to two.
Mr. Chair, can we ask for a short break after our first
Sure. We'll, we'll do it now? Yeah. Okay, let's break until
Eleven.
Six minutes, okay.
Yeah, because you're Do these deviations create unencircled influence that wouldn't otherwise create a difference? Yeah, but that's not a variance. I mean, four plus is the existence of four plus can
Hello?
Well, you, what you're doing as a neighbor is you're you tell them what you think, you don't think that this is you tell them, I don't believe this is minor, then you tell them why. Again, that's, that's fine. We have, we have normal, you know, I say local, regular neighbors who are, if they people are not I'm here all the time to give the interpretation. That's the reason why we sit down with the mayor. So I wouldn't, I was using, I wouldn't worry about what you're probably saying. Things want to be, you're going to tell them what we think about your worries. Yeah, but what I'm saying is, fire code, if fire code provisions is, is a terrible process that they have to they could be ready, you could hear, then you're going to link them and then change some stuff to make sure yeah, but the building front has to apply fire code system.
These things working now?
They have access, they have access to these plans and the fire code is not, it's a dependent one. I mean, I, I haven't actually looked at this. Well, what I'm saying is, these variances are written by some expert study.
Let's walk over here, because they're getting. No, 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 like, if they start hearing, so I'm not disrupting the proceedings. Just happy.
Okay, let's proceed with item two. Item two of thirty-two. Thirty-one ninety-one Weston Road. Purpose is to construct a new rear yard deck and to convert the existing garage into habitable space. There are two variances. No comments from city departments. No communication from neighbors. I would like to suggest to the panel that we consider this application to be straightforward and not requiring a presentation. Uh, if you're agreeable, I'll have a discussion with the agent to that effect. What? No, no, no. It'll be very serious if I have to use that. Are, are, are we okay with that?
Yeah.
Okay, so the agent is Mr. Abhishek Rajgar. Mr. Rajgar, are you available to speak to us?
Yes, good morning, Mr. Chair and committee members.
You're going to have to speak up.
Yes, good morning, can you hear me now?
Barely.
Okay, uh, I'm gonna be louder, yes, good morning, Mr. Chair and committee members.
Good morning. Sir, are you agreeable to not presenting to us? We, we find your application to be quite straightforward and we don't really need a presentation. You're entitled to say anything you want to us, but I'm just saying as an alternative, if you're okay with it, we could just move into any questions that the panel may have of you?
Yes, Mr. Chair, please.
Is that okay?
Yes, Mr. Chair, please, go ahead.
Okay, then, let's do it that way. So, panel, questions, comments? So, let's go into committee and make a decision.
Mr. Chair, I will bring a motion, um, in my view, I agree with the general comments, this is relatively straightforward. I believe it meets the four tests, uh, there's no neighborhood concerns or comments, and I move to approve. Um, I do not see any conditions.
No. Thank you, Ms. Popovich, is there a second for Ms. Popovich's motion?
Second.
Mr. Gully, thank you all in favor. That's approved unanimously, thank you, Mr. Rajgar.
Just a note for anyone participating on WebEx. We've been having some sound issues, so it may be difficult to hear you. You will have to speak very loudly directly into your device, so we appreciate your accommodation, thank you.
And on that last one, it's too late, but I failed to ask if there was any people on WebEx.
There was nobody online.
Thank God. And no, and no, and no one in the hearing room? Okay, good. Could I just ask you to tell me, the, the three of you, which items you're here for, sir?
Number seventeen.
Seventeen?
Number thirteen.
Thirteen? Thirteen, thirteen, seventeen, okay, thank you. Okay, moving on to item four, twelve sixty-six Martin Grove Road. Uh, the purpose?
Number four.
Oh, yeah, sorry, number four. Okay, there's a mistake on this agenda. It's forty-seven Foxwell Street.
Twenty-seven.
Twenty-seven. Twenty-seven Foxwell Street.
Yes, your agenda is labeled incorrect.
Yeah, okay, let me just see here. Okay. Purpose is to construct a second story addition above the existing dwelling and a new rear yard deck. Two variances, five support letters. No department comments. And no neighbor opposition. Anyone online, Camille, on this one?
Just the agent.
Clearly?
So, Mr. Allen? Oh, sorry.
Yep.
Panel, do we agree this is straightforward and not, not requiring a presentation? Okay, Mr. Allen?
Hi, good morning, Nicholas Allen from Replacement Design Inc. Uh, my address is one sixty The Westway, unit sixteen A, Atobaco, Ontario, and I'm here today speaking on behalf of the property owners.
Okay. So, I, I don't know if you listened to our little chat here, but we, we don't really need a presentation from you. This is pretty simple and straightforward, are you okay for us just proceed? And if we have any questions, of course, we'll ask them, but beyond that, we don't really need to hear from you.
Yeah, I'm okay with that.
You're good with that?
There's, uh, there were six letters of support, I think we submitted five, and then there was an additional six.
Yes, correct. Okay.
But I'm, I'm okay to proceed, yes.
Yep, good. Panel, questions, comments? So, let's go into committee for a motion then?
Mr. Chair, I'll bring this motion as well. Um, I believe this matter, uh, does meet the four tests. I do note the letters of support of neighbors, uh, as the applicant's agent has said, five came in and then one additional one came as well. So, I believe that is helpful.
Thank you.
I see no conditions, pardon me, I see.
Yep. You are correct, thank you very much, Ms. Popovich, second for Ms. Popovich. Ms. Riddick, thank you very much, all in favor? That's unanimously approved. Thank you, Mr. Allen. Item five, twelve Paramount Court. Purpose is to construct a new detached dwelling with an attached garage. Nine variances. No department comments. This is what? Oh, yeah, yeah. Urban forestry condition three. Anyone on WebEx that wants to speak to this?
So, we have Glenn Rubenoff as the agent listed, but it's going to be Sarah Barclay as the agent instead. So, I'll get her on.
Okay, panel, we agree this is straightforward, not requiring a presentation. So, Mr. Rubenoff?
Hi, good morning, it's Sarah Barclay from Rubenoff Design Group, I'm just stepping in for Glenn today. Um, the address is two Sinclair Avenue West, Toronto, we're speaking on behalf of the owner today. Um, I'm happy to forego presentation if you don't need one, um, but I will just note that we did discuss the file with planning. We did, um, already address any of their concerns, so that's why there are no comments from the department. Everything you have in front of you has been updated.
Okay, thank you. Panel, questions, comments? Can we have a motion then?
I'll, I'll move a motion to approve, I find the application meets the four tests. I would like to move approval subject to forestry condition three.
Thank you, Mr. Kamorik, is there a second for Mr. Kamorik's motion?
I'll second that.
Thanks, Ms. Popovich. All in favor? That's approved unanimously, thank you. Item six, forty-nine Glen Allen Drive East. Purpose of the application is to construct a new detached dwelling with an attached garage. Six variances. Urban forestry has requested their condition two, we have two support letters. No other department comments. Anyone online, Camille, beyond the agent?
We have the agent, Jennifer Scholes.
That's it, okay. Uh, panel, are we agreeable that this is straightforward and does not require a presentation? Thank you very much. Ms. Scholes?
Hello?
Hello? Could you just introduce yourself and give us your address?
I'm Jennifer Scholes, I'm the architect representing the homeowners, my address is sixty-eight Wimbledon Road in Toronto.
Thank you. So, are you agreeable, Ms. Scholes, to entertaining questions we have in lieu of you making a presentation?
I do, I'm agreeable.
Let's do that then, so, panel, questions, comments? No? Motion?
Chair, I'm going to move out the application of forty-nine Glen Allen Drive, uh, East, uh, be approved. What we have before us is a coverage issue, uh, FSI primarily, um, increase in the coverage from thirty-three percent to thirty-eight. FSI from, uh, forty-two percent, uh, resulting in a home of approximately three hundred and sixteen square, uh, meters. I believe, uh, it fits, uh, uh, the urban characters of the area. It meets the four tests, move approval with urban forestry condition number two.
Thank you, Mr. Gully, is there a second for Mr. Gully's motion? Thank you, Mr. Kamorik, all in favor? That's approved unanimously. Thank you, Ms. Scholes. Moving on to item seven.
Sorry, Mr. Chair, I don't see the agent online for number seven, I don't see him online.
S- sorry, is, is Mr. Krimmy not available? No?
No. He was online earlier, um, I do have him marked in, but he doesn't appear to be online right now. And we do have a neighbor in person.
Should we, maybe jump to the next one, if he comes back, alert me to that, or, yes, ma'am? Sorry? You're here, you're here for this item?
Yes.
But not as agent?
We'll try to get him back as quickly as possible, we'll just move on to the next item.
Okay, in the meantime, let's deal with item eight.
I do see him, he just popped up online. He is back, I'll get him online right now.
This is H- Hagevand?
Sorry, this is for item seven, Sal Creamy, the agent is online now.
Okay, good.
Hello?
Yes, Mr. Krimmy?
Good morning, Mr. Chair, and firstly apologies for the technical delay there, I had an issue with the connection. That's Sal Creamy, address two five seven two Eglinton Avenue West.
Okay. There's someone in the hearing room that wants to speak to this application, so, uh, it would be probably in order for you to make a presentation on what you're proposing.
Yes, of course, um, so, before you is a, a application, an application to legalize an as-built, uh, fourplex. Um, there was a permit previously issued for the construction a number of years ago, five to six years ago. The applicant, or the owner, rather, uh, built the addition larger than what was permitted and, uh, didn't finalize the permit closure at that time. Um, it has been occupied since completion, and before you are three variances to legalize the proposal. Um, I joined the application late, after it was submitted to committee, so it didn't give me a lot of time, but during my time preparing for it, I did survey the surrounding area, and I did find, uh, very similar examples to previous, uh, approvals that match closely to the length and depth. I did not, however, find, uh, appropriate examples for the rear yard setback within the immediate area. And I consider the immediate area within three hundred meters going larger just isn't appropriate, as the lot characteristics don't match. But also what I did find, part of my survey, is that within this immediate context, there are a number of examples of, uh, two-car rear detached garages at or very close to the rear yard lot line. So, part of that survey, obviously having an addition closer to the rear lot line produces, um, a precedence that we would like to avoid, but however, there is somewhat of a common example of single-story structures such as this being very close to the rear line. We do have a sizable, uh, we do have a setback, there is no detached garage here at the rear line, it is really just the addition that approaches. And this proposal does try and provide more affordable rental units within this area that are of high demand, as it is, uh, a fourplex. And part of that initial survey, uh, when I did join the hearing, I did go out with the owner's representative and try to meet with neighbors. Um, some were not home, we weren't able to, but we did speak to several. In closing, this isn't the way to build, and I do, I did express that to the owner, the owner, the neighbors. That was the main kind of concern, that it was built, um, without the proper due course procedure. But nonetheless, it is a single-story, uh, addition, there wasn't two stories, and it is in somewhat, um, consistent with the current built form in the immediate area, so in some respects adaptable and minor in nature. I think that sums up what I wanted to express on this proposal and open it up to any questions if there are any.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Krimmy, panel, any questions or comments?
I have a question, if I may, or maybe it's a comment more than a question. Um, I mean, you're, you're seeking, uh, variances for building depth and building length. It would be helpful to the committee, uh, when you do that, to show on your site plan the, um, length and depth of, of the neighboring, uh, immediate, uh, properties. You're only showing yours, and then it, we, we have no reference to show where yours terminates in relation to the two immediate neighbors. Uh, perhaps you could comment on that, since you haven't illustrated it?
Uh, through you, Mr. Chair. Again, joined the application late on this one, I wasn't part of the formation of the drawings. Ultimately, that information comes off of the survey that is part of the application, and I, I don't want to stretch any part of the truth. Uh, the survey didn't clearly show it, it was really a, a survey as-built, and it didn't have clear definitions, to my knowledge.
Okay, so the sur- so the survey is as-built, it's not prior to the addition then?
Well, a, a proper application has to have what the current context is. And again, I'm, I'm, I'm joining late, the survey wasn't part of my documents, um, but I do agree with you that that should have been shown. I relied on firsthand knowledge visiting the site in combination with aerial imaging.
What's the survey date, I'm trying to find it?
Unfortunately, the survey provided isn't up to date, and it doesn't show the existing entire building. But our application requirements do say for a site plan to show location of buildings on adjacent lots. So, just a note for the applicant. They should have also provided an up-to-date survey, which they didn't in this case.
So, this is not an up-to-date survey? Okay, so potentially we could be deferring this to a request one. Thank you.
Anything else, panel? Okay, ma'am, if you'd like to come up and, uh, give us your name and address firstly? Okay, ma'am, if you'd like to come up and give us your name and address firstly?
Good day, Mr. Chair and members of the community. My name is Donna Volby. I live at one-three-six Gracefield Avenue. I think I'm here representing a number of my neighbors who are not happy with the fact of this property and the number, the large number of tenants that are coming and going through this property, okay? According to the previous tenants, it was not built to code, and there is not proper fire exits in place for these tenants. There's seven bathrooms. There's tenants, from what I can see, it's a bungalow. And there's tenants on the main floor, tenants in the basement, which might be divided into. And there's like rooms in the back for more tenants, okay? I'm not sure if, I'm more sure than I'm not that it hasn't been done to code. And I don't know why they're asking for variance, but I'm wondering, has like an inspector gone through to see that it was done to code? And why, if it's not done to code, have, has nothing been rectified? I don't know. Like, I'm just a layperson. I don't know how to, like, all the different codes and laws around this. I'm just here to express my concerns about that number of people that are living in the home, how they park on the streets, which make it very unsafe for the people on the other side, like facing them, to exit their driveways. Everybody complains about that. This happens even in the wintertime, not just the summer. Myself and my family and my neighbors don't feel safe, but to the point that they are not even willing to show up here today. I was the only one that said I have to be a voice for them. There's, because it's a revolving door, I don't know if they do criminal checks on these tenants. There's definitely been a lot of theft, especially, like, for me and our surrounding neighbors. For me, like, large items, not just small items, and expensive items. Like, the homes that are surrounding this home, to the point that one of your members brought up, are in original-built, small bungalows. This is not an original-built. They've built it maybe six years ago. And this used to be a very quiet and serene neighborhood, and now these tenants are up all hours of the night. The lights outside are very bright and annoying to our family home. I don't know what else to say. And, oh, yes, their garage is used by the landlord as a storage for his construction business. So they come very early in the morning to take equipment and whatnot out of that home. So everybody has to, like, take their cars off the driveway, so he can come in to pick up his supplies for his construction company. Early in the morning. It's disturbing us. So, like, I'm hoping that these variants are rejected, like, or whatever. I just came to express that. I don't know if it's worth anything, but thanks for your time. I don't know.
Okay, thank you. Panel, questions, comments? If you'd like to take your seat, we'll invite Mr. Krimi to give him an opportunity to rebut your comments. Mr. Krimi?
Yes, thank you, through Mr. Chair. And firstly, I'd like to state out of the gate that an application such like this is difficult to, you know, view and also difficult to make a final decision on. But if we're going to respond to the concerns raised, not only by the neighbor that did attend the hearing today, but by neighbors within the area that I did speak with. And at the forefront, I will express that I live directly within this area, so I have firsthand knowledge of the situation here, frequently pass by the address, so I've seen it multiple times of the day. And I can say that the reason this application is before you today is from a tenant that they had very difficult interactions with. It was of the nature, the tenant was of the character that the neighbor attending today was. He was a very aggressive person, not very respectful to other tenants of the house, as well as the neighbors. Since then, that tenant has left, and the owners have been much more critical of the people that they are letting in, obviously to avoid headaches for themselves. So at no point in time did I see more than two vehicles parked within the driveway. It is a very large, it's a very long driveway that can fit a minimum of two cars deep, three if there's a smaller car. But then also at the front, there's a wider space as well. So it can fit up to three vehicles within the driveway. As well, a lot of other houses along the street do use the street for street parking as well. It is a common application here. I have firsthand knowledge of it. And regarding the concerns about building code, ultimately, that will be addressed part of the permit closure process. Through you, Mr. Chair, as you're aware, whatever decision is made today, whether it is a decision to approve, the property will have to then apply for a revision to the building permit and then close that building permit, which will have a Part Nine Building Inspector Generalist come and review what was built. Ultimately, if they see major infractions of the building code, it'll be addressed at that time. They won't close the permit until they're rectified. But ultimately, it'll have the designing professional sign off on what was built. So there are layers of insulation to ensure that minimum fire code standards are adhered to, as well as building code minimums are adhered to. Regarding the multiple access points, as you can see on the site plan, the, it is a fourplex, and access to the units are provided from the front and rear of the home. There's almost a firewall that divides down the middle, the units on the two levels, front and rear. So that is the reasoning as to why there are people accessing from the rear and from the front. And regarding the use of the garage, I definitely implore the neighbor and as well as the client, this is something that I can set up with them, to discuss concerns that come up. That definitely the client and the owner are open to modifying how they access the property. But, I mean, a lot of people in this area also do work in construction and do leave early. The starting of a vehicle is something that comes with everyday life. I don't know if that's necessarily something that can be looked at as a nuisance for whether it's a multiplex or a single-family dwelling. There are just going to be some things that are standard part of living. Working in construction is one of them. And starting of a vehicle, I don't, as long as it is limited to that and not excessive noise, should be acceptable. But if there are instances where that is not acceptable, that's definitely something that can be, you know, coordinated between the neighbors to make sure that how the owner is using the property is appropriate for the area. And I open it to the committee if there are any further questions at this time.
Okay, panel, any questions or comments for Mr. Krimi?
Chair, I have a couple of questions. Mr. Krimi, can you kindly tell me, do you have any idea how old this building is? Built in the seventies, eighties?
This area was predominantly developed between the sixties, seventies, and eighties. The vintage of this house, to me, looks like it was built late sixties, early seventies. And then the addition, as we know, was within the past six years.
Yeah, and so everything is existing. You're here for these three variances for an existing building?
Yes, to legalize and maintain.
Yeah, and Mr. Krimi, are you aware by any chance how long it's been a fourplex?
It's its construction, to my knowledge. I think it started as a triplex, and within the past years was converted, not converted, I think it was just adapted to a fourplex when the multiplex, when the multiplex bylaw did come into effect.
Okay, so you're here pretty much to maintain the existing fourplex, and should this committee approve it, then you would have to go to Building Department for building permits. Is that correct?
Yeah, to legalize what's here, it still has to follow the building permit process. The committee decision cannot finalize what was actually built. It's just going to approve what is proposed. So, yes, a building inspector would need to come and properly close the construction.
And also look at issues with respect to fire access, emergency access, building code issues related to plumbing, electrical, et cetera, right?
Structural, architectural, everything that's part of the standard building permit process.
Okay, thank you.
And if there is nothing, if there is nothing to, or of concern to the building inspector, especially because it is a multi-unit dwelling, it will be raised at that time.
Thank you. Thank you, sir.
Any other questions or comments?
Yeah, I think there's a little bit of a, bit of a misdirect here. From what I can gather, the survey appears to have been done in twenty eighteen. Not sure if you agree or disagree with that. Mr. Krimi?
No, I do agree. It was done in twenty eighteen.
Okay, so between that date and the present, an addition was put on this structure, was it not?
It was.
Okay. Was there a permit issued for that addition?
Yes. So the reason, like, as I kind of earlier stated, there was a building permit issued for an addition. The problem here is the owner built larger, longer than what was approved for.
So the original permit wouldn't have had the rear yard or the length variances?
No, because at that time, they didn't trigger a variance. They kept it to a point where they had bided by the zoning.
On paper?
So it didn't, like, on, yeah, and that
Not in reality.
That was what was issued during the course of excavation, to my knowledge. The owner visited the site, didn't like
So did you wind up with any orders to comply?
I am not aware of any orders to comply. There weren't any part of the file that I was issued, nor did I see any. I think what happened here, and what I was told, there was a very difficult tenant causing headaches both for the neighbors and for the owner, ultimately as a form of
Well, how do you get, but how do you get a tenant before you get an occupancy?
You just don't call for occupancy. It's not the right way to do it. They just built and didn't call for final inspection. It got, fell, it fell through the cracks with the Building Department, and they occupied.
Yeah, well, see, you never
It's not the way to do things. It's not the way to do things at all. Unfortunately, that's what happened here.
Somehow, somehow, the building permit process fell apart in this case, is what
You know what? It's on the onus of the constructor, in this case, the owner, to call for those inspections. If the inspections aren't called for, the city, as busy as they are, especially in recent years with the multiplexes
So, so now we're in a situation where we're looking at this as if this was a brand-new application. And if this was a brand-new application, I would have concerns with the length and with the rear yard setback. And given that, I haven't even heard any evidence that this is comparable, reasonable, or common in this area. I mean, garages at the rear is different than the structure being all the way to the rear. The only thing I can find that's remotely comparable is number one forty-five.
I mean, respectfully, through you, Mr. Chair, as I alluded at the start, I did pull up previous decisions within the area, and there is presentation material in front of you, that there are examples within three hundred meters of length and depth. Also, what I did say is I didn't find examples of the rear yard setback within that three hundred meters. I found them further away on different lots.
Yeah, no, no, understood. I do recall that. It's the rear yard setback that's the most concerned to me. I mean, what I really don't want to see is an application coming to us, you know, next year for a garden suite on this property.
No, it doesn't have the room for the minimum required setback from the rear main wall of the house to the front main wall of the garden suite. There just simply isn't enough case. The closest I've been a part of an application to permit is five-point-one meters of separation. So there is no space here for a garden suite, and what is built is what realistically will be maintained. And again, it's a one-story addition. The whole house is capped at one story. And again, if you're gonna, not to compare it, not to compare it to a two-story detached rear yard garage, but in essence, that's what this house looks out at. So there are actually closer nuisances of built structures, similar in story and similar in mass, to what's proposed before you today. And not even what the presentation material in front of you, you can't see. Not to say what's here, not to say what's here is, you know, the right, like, again, the right way to do things, but at the end of the day, they chose, as everybody is entitled to do, they chose to do it a certain way. Unfortunately, they did allow people to call this home too. Not to say that's something that we should, you know, approve it.
At this point, you're just answering questions.
I think we're good. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments from the panel? Okay, and let's go into committee for more discussion if we need it or a decision.
Chair, the only thing I want to say is that, really, we're here to specifically examine and determine whether the variances that are being requested meet the four tests. Whether it's multi, whether there are tenants in the building that should be there, or are there illegally, or anything else to that effect, unfortunate, fortunately or unfortunately, it's not before us. I believe what's before us is really the structure that's up and the variances that are being requested.
Thank you, Mr. Gully.
And also, I just want to say that I don't see any reports from any departments. Planning didn't comment. Engineering didn't comment. There's no request from Forestry. There are no reports from anyone necessarily raising red flags or objecting or making conditions.
Sorry, ma'am, we don't discuss with you. We're in committee. The discussion is just amongst us. It's all right. As you said, you're a layperson. You're learning, right? Any other comments?
No, my only comment is that if we do approve it, the only solace I take in this is that it will have to be subject to the building permit process. That's probably the more, the most we can, the surest way we can ensure that things are being done in a safe and legal way.
So your concern is that it's not automatically going to go through that process, and you want to make sure it does?
Yeah, I want to make sure it does. Yeah, that was my reluctance to do a deferral for the applicant to submit a proper up-to-date survey, as is required. But I'm reluctant to further delay this process.
Okay.
Sorry.
Would you like to make or prefer to respond to a motion from someone else?
I'll make the motion to approve this. I think we need the housing. I think it's reasonable. It's not, you know, as has been mentioned numerous times, the way we got here is not the right way for us to get here. But in the interest of what I believe is the best community interest is to get this thing properly inspected as soon as possible, and in that regard, I'll move approval.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Kamork. Is there a second for Mr. Kamork's motion?
Chair, I want to second it, because I believe that's the best way to vet, vet it and put it through the wringer, so to speak. So I'm going to second that motion.
Okay, thank you. All in favor? That's unanimously approved. Thank you, Mr. Krimi. Thank you, ma'am. Now move on to item eight. Forty-two Thirty-Eighth Street. Purpose is to construct a new duplex dwelling with an attached garage. There are three variances. We have urban forestry conditions two and three. And we have a letter of concern regarding groundwater and rain flow issues, which, as we've discussed earlier, aren't germane to our consideration. Groundwater, water runoff issues are dealt with as part of the building permit process, so on that basis, panel, may I, may we proceed on the basis that this is, in our view, straightforward? And not requiring a presentation? Too late, when did I commit? Well, that's the one I just referenced. Yeah, yeah, that was in the additional material, yeah, yeah. So yeah, we're aware of that. So any problem, panel, with proceeding on the basis of being straightforward? So if we can talk to Mehdi Ajvan, the agent?
Hello. Good afternoon.
Sorry, we're having a hard time hearing you, can you just speak up a little bit?
Good afternoon, can you hear me?
Barely.
Okay, so I try to speak louder, is it better now?
Yeah, that's better, if you give us your name and address, and then I just wanna speak to you for a second.
Sure, my name is Mehdi Ajvan, I'm the architect of project, and I'm here on behalf of my client, the owner of forty-two Thirty-Eighth Street. As you said, it is pretty straightforward application, we are asking just for three variances, one of them is technical variance, and we will be in touch with our neighbor at the rear part of our property, and we will aware of our, their concern, which is pretty true. But based on our review, it doesn't have anything to the zoning relief that we are asking, and we agree with them that we have to come up with a solution to solve the situation of flooding at the back of property, it is a common, a common situation for all properties at the James Street and between Thirty-Eighth and Thirty-Ninth. If you need a presentation, I, I'll be more than happy to provide it.
No, I, we, we've concluded that we don't need a presentation, sir, if we have any questions, is it okay if we just proceed on that basis? Asking questions, if we have any? Can I ask you to say yes or no to that question, please?
Oh, yes, yes, yes.
Thank you. Okay, so any questions or comments, panel?
Yeah, my only comment is, I mean, there is a fairly narrow side yard setback, but it's at a pinch point, so. I'm okay with it.
You're okay with it, alright. Then let's go into committee and make our motion then.
Chair, I'm purpo, I, I'm prepared to make a motion on this application. There's one variance before us that we're looking at, and, and there, there's one in particular variance that, that I'm looking at, and that is the side yard, the south side, side yard setback, which is nominal, but I think appropriate as the previous speaker indicated, in my view. And I believe his as well, we have no concerns from transportation, no concerns with TRCA. Urban Forestry has some advisory comments only, and so does Metro Links, I believe it's a good application, I'm gonna move approval with no conditions.
Thank you, Mr. Gully, a second for Mr. Gully?
Yeah, I'll second, but I believe forestry has conditions.
Oh, yes.
The advisory?
No. They, they've requested. Two and three, so it's private tree protection and a tree in.
Sorry. I'll add that, no problem, Urban Forestry, two and three.
Okay, I'll, I'll, I'll second that with that addition.
Okay, good, all in favor? That's unanimously approved, thank you. Mr. Ajvan? Moving on to item nine, twenty-four Cordella Avenue. Purpose is to construct a second-story addition above the existing dwelling, a one-story rear addition, and a deck in the rear yard. There's one variance. We have clearances from transporta, transportation review. We have an advisory from Ravine and Nat, Natural Features. We have a Metro Links advisory, and we have a clearance from TRCA. No other comments or conditions from departments. Nothing from the neighbors. Panel, may we treat this as straightforward? Agreed, okay. So Sarah Madi is the agent? Ms. Madi?
Yeah, hi, hello.
Hi. You just repeat your name and give us your address, please?
Yeah, my name is Sarah Madi, and my address is thirteen fifty-six Weir Chase. In Mississauga.
Okay, so are you okay just to proceed with questions in lieu of our presentation?
Yes.
Okay. So panel, any questions? Comments, nothing? Okay, let's go into committee then for a decision. There are no conditions.
Yeah, I find the application to be sorry, to meet the four tests and quite minor, I'd like to move approval with no conditions.
Thank you, Mr. Camarc, second for Mr. Camarc's motion? Thank you, Ms. Popovich, all in favor? That's approved unanimously. Thank you, moving on to item eleven. Fifty-two fifty-one Dundas Street West. Purpose is to permit a bicycle parking space deficiency in order to accommodate the development of a fifty-story mixed-use building. There are two variances. We have a community planning condition, a Metro Links advisory. Transportation review, I have okay, but is this, is this not the one where they had conditions? No, okay, so there, we got a clearance from transportation review, and we have a one-opposition letter. The agent is? Ian Veloso? No, yes, yes, Ian Veloso? Mr. Veloso?
Hello? Can you hear me?
No, barely.
Uh, what about now, is that better?
A little better.
Okay, I can believe that. Hi, good morning, my name is Ian Veloso, my address is one thirty-four Peter Street.
Okay, we do, we do have an opposition letter on this, so maybe you could just take a, it's very straightforward, just in, in a minute or two, if you could present to us what you're proposing here.
Yeah, no, no problem, so our variances, we have two proposed variances, both for the reduction of bike parking, one being long-term and the other being short-term. The variance is to comply with the most recently passed city bylaws with respect to bike parking, which enables the cash-in-lu program for the, place for the reduction of both long and short-term bike parking. So we have had discussions with planning and transportation about these reductions, and have agreed as per the planning letter to the conditions to provide cash-in-lu for the reduction of, of the bicycle parking spaces. And happy to address any questions related to that.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Veloso, panel, questions, comments?
Just a comment, this, this site is a frequent flyer at this committee. I think it's the third time.
Mr. Gully?
Chair, I was wondering if the agent will be addressing the letter from Ms. Irene Jones?
I ha, happy to address it, I believe in the, I believe in the letter, the conclusion was that it would be supportable for the variance with the provision of cash-in-lu, which, as I mentioned, we, we've agreed to that condition with planning.
Perhaps we're not speaking of the same letter, I, I think Ms. Jones raised but a few other issues? I'm just trying to.
From sixteen Acorn Avenue?
Correct.
Yeah.
Uh, yeah, so I'm just looking at the, the other issues being the amenities and open space, and the location of the tower next to Hydro Corridor. All of the, all of these items have been addressed through the planning approvals already in place for the building, planning approval, site plan approval, as well as building permits being issued. So all of those factors have already been considered as, as to where we are today.
So, so just again, from my own edification, can you just elaborate a little bit on usable amenities or benefits to the local community, parkland dedication or open space?
Yeah, no problem.
And also some of the social services, the soft services.
Can I comment, I just think, I think she's saying that, he's saying that they're making payment in lieu, and how this, the, the city decides to spend those money, could be on those things, but I, he doesn't have any control over it, I think.
That money.
That's, yeah, the complaint is asking for it to be specifically dedicated to the community, but once payment is made in lieu, the, the applicant doesn't control how the city.
The payment is specifically going to be made for bike share, bicycle provisions. It will not be for any other community benefits.
Yeah.
And I believe the applic, the objector was saying that it should be for other general community benefit, which I'm assuming would have taken place as part of the greater planning process, that would have gone, that what this site would have gone through rezoning and site plan approval, et cetera. And that's when those payments would have been made, if any. Perhaps the, the applicant can state what payments were made for that benefit.
Exactly, I, I, I was wondering if you could kindly elaborate a little bit on the issues that Ms. Jones raises, because they're very important issues, I understand completely the fact that the cash-in-lu is for cash-in-lu related to bicycles. But with respect to open space, tree planting, park dedication, can you address all those amenities, whether they were provided during the official plan amendments, or the rezoning, or site plan, and can you give us some idea as to what they were? Very important, I, I, I thought the letter was raising some very important issues, and I think it's good for us to understand, to understand those as well. We under, I understand, and I think we understand, the issue of cash-in-lu for bicycling, bicycles, et cetera. But these other amenities and soft service issues, were they, were they not addressed in a prior process?
Yeah, absolutely, happy to address it, and as the other member mentioned, those processes were addressed during the planning approvals processes. And CBC payments and parkland payments have been made in association with this file already, which the city can choose what to do with those, with those cash contributions, and as noted, planning, the cash-in-lu specifically for bike parking, we've agreed to that amount, but it's up to city staff and planning to decide on where those are allocated to. And in this case, planning has identified that those will be allocated towards the bike sharing facilities.
Thank you.
Any other questions, comments? So let's go into committee for a discussion if we need it or a decision.
I, I, I'm prepared to move a motion for approval, I believe the application meets the four tests, despite the frequent repeat appearances of this site before our committee. But I think this one does make sense, and the it gives the city more flexibility, and the neighborhood more flexibility with regards to to the access for bicycles, and for that reason, I would move approval.
Thank you, Mr. Camarc, second for Mr. Camarc's motion?
Chair, I'll second that, understanding the specifics of the application before us today, I'll second that.
Thank you, Mr. Gully, all in favor? That's unanimously approved. Thank you, Mr. Veloso. What if we just have a quick time management chat here? It's after twelve. It, there, in my mind, there's no way we're getting through this morning's agenda by one. I'm wondering if we can keep going as far as we can until, until one? And then break and probably resume after, at two or something, to finish the morning, and then we'll start the afternoon. I guess the, the point I'm really trying to get at here is in interest to this gentleman, who's here for item seventeen. And I'm trying to set this up so that we're not gonna hear about, hear item seventeen until well after two o'clock.
I don't know. We don't, I don't see many speakers for the next few items, if we could finish the morning session, and then you would take a break for lunch, and just delay the start of the afternoon session.
Okay, well, the morning session then is probably gonna go to about two.
Yeah.
Okay. And we'll, we'll take a break, I guess sometime between now and two, or one o'clock or something. Twenty minutes, maybe? Okay, then let's carry on. Item twelve, twenty-two Cutler Crescent. Purpose is to construct a second-story addition above the existing dwelling. There are three variances. We have urban forestry initially recommending deferral, and then in a freestanding memo as an alternative suggesting their conditions, one and two. We have a five-signature support petition. Panel, do we agree we can treat this as straightforward? Okay. David Moscow?
Speaking, President.
And your address, please?
Fourteen Augustus Terrace, Toronto, Ontario.
Okay, so would you be agreeable to, instead of making a presentation, we find your application to be quite clear and straightforward? And in lieu of that, if we have any questions, we'll leave it at that?
Yes.
Okay, let's do that then, so panel, any questions or comments? None? Then let's have a motion.
Chair, I'm prepared to move approval of the three variances that are being requested, FSI, nominal increase, in my view, the setback front yard, also nominal, as well as the rear yard setback. I'm gonna move approval as subject to UFC conditions one and two.
Thank you, Mr. Gully, is there a second for Mr. Gully's motion?
I'll second.
Thanks, Ms. Popovich, all in favor? That's approved unanimously, thank you. Moving on to item thirteen. Eleven Kingsway Crescent. Purpose is to construct a new detached dwelling with an attached garage. Three variances. We had urban forestry requesting denial initially, and then in a freestanding memo offering their conditions one and two, in lieu of a denial. We have a rear Ravine and Natural Features advisory. We have a TRCA approval with an advisory that a permit is required. And we have two speakers. Or are you the agent?
I'm the agent.
You're the agent.
On this application for today.
Okay, I had you noted down here, straightforward, not requiring a presentation, but in that you are here and standing where you are, please present.
Okay, sounds good. Hello, Mr. Chair and fellow committee members, my name is Maya Marchesi, a planner at Design Plan Services located at eighty-seven Skyway Avenue in Toronto. I'm here on behalf of the property owner of eleven Kingsway Crescent. We're here today to seek relief for three variances related to the proposed new two-story dwelling, and I've submitted. And I've submitted a detailed planning justification letter speaking to the variances requested. The first variance is for the GFA. We're proposing five thirty-nine point nine-nine square meters, where four thirty-four point four-five square meters is permissible top of bank. Just to put it into perspective, if we were to consider the entire lot area, the permitted GFA would actually be eight thirty-four point five square meters, and we'd be compliant. There's also many similar or greater GFAs approved along Kingsway Crescent and within the surrounding neighborhood. Variance two is related to the second-story platform with an area of nineteen point two-nine square meters. This will be located off of the primary bedroom and is not anticipated to be an area of congregation. There's large mature trees between the platform and the neighboring lot, which will provide some natural screening, and so we don't believe a privacy screen will be necessary for this platform. And the neighboring dwelling is also set further back than the proposed dwelling, so this platform will be facing into the front yard and driveway area of the neighboring dwelling, as opposed to the rear yard or directly into the neighboring dwelling, reducing any privacy impacts. There are also some similar approvals in the area. And then variance three is for the proposed driveway width of eight point one-one meters. It's minor. It's not going to be impacting landscaping, and it will largely be screened from the street by existing hedges, reducing any visual impacts. I've discussed the proposal with community planning and TRCA, both of which do not have concerns. I'm also not aware of any concerns or objections from neighbors at this time. I am aware of urban forestry's recommendation for refusal. However, I respectfully disagree with their comments. While I'm not an arborist, we did submit an arborist report by a certified arborist for this proposal. Urban forestry's memo refers to a consent as well as possible tree removals. And I want to clarify, we are not proposing a consent on this property, and we are not proposing to remove any trees, only injuries. So I'm not sure why this is mentioned in their report. I did try to reach out to them to clarify and have not heard back yet. As per our submitted arborist report, the proposed excavation and construction will not adversely affect the long-term health, safety, or existing condition of the trees, as long as the recommended tree preservation measures are implemented. Additionally, we did design this proposal intentionally to ensure that no trees would be removed, particularly the large oak tree in front of the dwelling. We are regulated by the TRCA and limited to development above the long-term stable top of bank, so we're not able to set the dwelling further back from that tree. And further to that, the proposed dwelling is within the as-of-right building envelope. And if we were to eliminate all the variances today, there would still be impacts to bylaw-protected trees. And we'll still need to work with urban forestry and go through their permit process to propose the tree injuries, should the committee decide to approve this application today. Based on the provided justification, it's my professional opinion that the proposal fits in with the existing and planned context of the neighborhood and is consistent with redevelopment trends along Kingsway Crescent and within the broader neighborhood. And it's my professional opinion that the proposal meets the four tests set out in forty-five one of the Planning Act and represents good planning. I'm happy to answer any questions, if there are any. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Marchesi. Panel, questions or comments?
Just one, if I may, with regards to the proposed deck or balcony. Is that off of the principal bedroom?
It is off of the principal bedroom, yes.
Just trying... Sorry, because it's a considerable size. I'm just trying to understand the rationale on that.
It's just some amenity space for the residents. It's off of the principal bedroom towards the north side of the lot, so it's not expected to be an area of congregation.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions or comments, panel? Okay, thank you, Ms. Marchesi. And sir, you wish to speak to this application as well?
No, I'm...
Just observing.
I'm the owner, busy agent.
Well, you're very interested in the outcome of this, though. Okay. Okay, thank you very much. Okay, so panel, let's go into committee and discuss if we need to, or make a decision.
Chair, I prefer to make a motion unless there are any comments from other members of the panel.
Proceed.
So, Chair, I listened to the presentation very carefully, and I think it was very comprehensive, concise, and excellent. And the reason I say that is because I did read the planning justification report of August seventh, and that was very thorough as well. I found the justification for these variances that are being requested appropriate. I believe the application before us does meet the four tests. I'm going to move approval. And by the way, we already know that TRCA is okay with that. There was a letter from them dated August seventh that they had no concerns with the application. So I'm going to move for approval, subject to urban forestry conditions, one and two.
Thank you, Mr. Gully. Is there a second or for Mr. Gully? Ms. Riddick, thank you very much. All in favor? That's proved unanimously? Thank you, Ms. Marchesi.
Have a good rest of your day.
Congratulations, sir. Moving on to item fourteen. Four-one-eight The Kingsway. Purpose is to construct a new detached dwelling with an attached garage with an accessory structure in the rear yard. This is a revised application. There were ten variances. There are now seven. And two of those seven have been revised as well. Number two and number six. Yeah. Okay, we have... We do have a presentation. We have opposition from twenty-seven Abilene Drive. Transportation Review has requested three conditions of approval. We have two support letters. And we had urban forestry in their consolidated memo requesting refusal or condition two as a fallback. And then in a freestanding memo requesting, they requested conditions one and two. And when these matters are confused, if we move toward approval, we give it to staff to resolve. We would just impose urban forestry conditions without being specific, because there is a conflict. So, as I said, there is a presentation. Presumably Jim Pfeffer is the agent?
Yes, I am here, Jim Pfeffer, from Macau, or from ninety-five St. Clair Avenue West.
Okay.
Can you hear? Yeah.
If you could make a brief presentation to us, that'd be good?
Yeah, so I mean, we're happy to accept both of those urban forestry conditions, as with the previous project. Urban forestry did say that, you know, the injury to the trees that they saw was because of a severance, which of course, we're not requesting. But we also submitted an arborist report. And I think the trees that urban forestry identified as a concern are either not going to be significantly injured by the work or are within the as-of-right footprint of the house, in any case. So they're not really a result of any of the variances that we're requesting today. So if you take a look at this front elevation, I think this is very much in keeping with some of the substantial homes that you're finding being developed along the Kingsway. We are asking for, you know, a small height variance. Part of that height variance is for the drainage roof on the upper part of this roof, which isn't seen. And then this roof itself is a hip roof that recedes in perspective from all sides. And the variances we're asking for are very much in keeping with other variances which have been granted both along the Kingsway and in the nearby neighborhood. And I think in this rendering as well, we are asking for a driveway width variance, but not for anything to do with the circular drive. It's just the width of the driveway as it enters the garage is twenty-one centimeters, so almost nothing wider than the width of the parking space is behind. That particular thing, it's very far away from the trees. There's no soft landscaping variance requested. So really, all of that is very minor. So if you go on to the next page, that's our site plan. You can see that six point three meters, that's where we're asking for the driveway width. We're no longer asking for a lot coverage variance, so the lot coverage is entirely as-of-right. We are asking for a side setback variance for that cabana in the bottom right-hand corner of this image. There is an existing shed there right now. There is a hedge on the neighboring property that if you wanted to see, you could see in photos towards the end of our presentation. That neighbor hasn't expressed any concerns. And as a matter of fact, I'd like to note that the owner of this property has talked to the neighbors on either side, and the neighbors across the street, and has received, although not letters of support from the immediate neighbors, no objections and just general expressions of support. We are asking for a balcony size variance in that red square. That's where that balcony is. It's off the principal bedroom. It's not intended to be for any sort of, it's, you know, for occasional quiet use. And it's, you know, well separated from the neighboring properties. As well, there are side yard setback variances, not to the house, because the house itself complies with a front, side, and rear yard setbacks. Those side yard setbacks are just to that rear terrace, which is just a terrace on grade. And because of the nature of this lot, that terrace is supposed to be set back seven and a half meters from the side property line. Instead, as you can see, it's set back, you know, well over four meters on each side. So it's very well separated from the neighboring properties. And it's really, it's a terrace on grade. It's non-elevated. So there's no overlook. There's no impact to that variance at all. And I think that's about it. If you go to the next page, you can see just kind of an aerial photograph, just showing the overall configuration of homes in the area. We are continuing the pattern of open space and side and rear setbacks that you'd see in the neighborhood. The object, the letter of objection is from the, if you can see our subject property, which is where we've overlaid our site plan, on the street behind and four houses in from Twyford Road. So four, four houses in from that intersection to the left of our house. That's the neighbor. So that property isn't contiguous with our property at all. It's on the opposite side of where we're proposing the cabana. So I don't think that person is really impacted at all. And then I think if you want to take a look at the next page, you'll see some houses, either committee of adjustment drawings or photographs of houses that have exceeded in this area, the height that we're requesting. And then just on the next page, you can see a number of houses in the neighborhood, which I think are very much kind of in keeping with the same type of presentation that we're showing for this house. So, you know, I think I'm happy to take any questions, but I think these variances are very much in keeping with all of the four tests.
Are you finished, Mr. Pfeffer? Your time's up?
Yes, yes.
Okay, good, good. Thank you. So panel, any questions or comments for Mr. Pfeffer? No? And Camille, is anyone online wishing to speak to this matter?
There's nobody online.
Okay. So let's go into committee then, for a discussion if we need it, or a decision.
Okay. Having heard the presentation and also seeing the revisions, I'm happy with the revisions that were proposed. I believe the application as revised now meets the four tests and would be happy to move approval subject to forestry condition two. And I believe that's it.
Could I suggest that rather than saying forestry two, we just say forestry?
Sure.
Because the staff made a side to impose one and two?
Fair enough.
We're leaving it up to them, right?
Yep, that's fine.
Is that okay? So we'll just say urban forestry and...
And transportation.
Transportation review, three conditions, yeah. Thank you, Mr. Kamork. Second or for Mr.?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Gully. All in favor? That's proved unanimously. Thank you, Mr. Pfeffer. Moving on to item fifteen, twenty-two Ashton Manor. Construct a new deck in the rear yard. One variance, urban forestry condition two. No other departmental comments? No comments from neighbors? Panel, are we okay with proceeding on the basis of being straightforward? You have a question?
Yeah, but we can go with...
Okay, let's... Almeda Rosetti, agent?
Yes, present.
At your address, please?
Good afternoon, Honorable Chair and committee members. My name's Rosetti, and I'm at seventy-six Orender Road, the designer for Soldier Pools, and the agent for twenty-two Ashton Manor.
Okay. So are you agreeable with foregoing a presentation and just answering any questions that we may have for you?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. And I know we'll start with Mr. Kamork. You have a question or a comment?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. Just trying to understand the, if we can go to a site plan? And there's a, I'm assuming we're looking at a two-level deck, and you're trying to construct it around a tree?
Correct.
And then, is there a structure that's on the other side of the pool as well? Is that a second deck?
There is a deck on grade.
Okay, okay, because it wasn't labeled, but it was, I guess, indicated with the same sort of drawing as the deck? But I just wanted to... So it's at grade, so therefore, it's not part of building... Okay. Just wanted to understand that. Thank you.
Anything else, panel? Questions, comments? Then let's go into committee.
Mr. Chair, I will bring a motion to approve the single minor variance subject to urban condition, excuse me, urban forest conditions. And I'll leave that for specificity to city staff. And that's all I see in terms of...
Thank you, Ms. Popovic. A second or for Mr.?
I'll second that.
Thank you, Ms. Riddick. All in favor? That's approved unanimously? Thank you, Ms. Rosetti. Moving on to item sixteen, one-twenty-six Church Street. Purpose is to construct a new rear one- and two-story addition, including an attached garage. There are four variances. We have no comments from departments, no conditions. We have, we received in our additional materials some support materials and two letters of support. Panel, may we proceed on the basis of straightforward? Okay. The agent is Adria Durazzo.
Good morning.
Sorry, we're having a hard time hearing you. Can you please speak up?
I'm sorry, is my voice cleared now?
We still can't hear you.
Oh.
Could you tell me what she said? I can't hear.
You just have to speak louder. It's not a connection issue. You just have to speak louder.
Hello?
Hello. Can you speak as loudly as possible, please?
Yes, my name is Adria Durazzo from Replacement Design, located at one-sixty The West Way, Unit sixteen A, in Etobicoke. I'm here today on behalf of the property owners at one-twenty-six Church Street.
Okay. And did you hear our conversation? As a panel, we don't believe we need a presentation for your application. It's pretty straightforward. Are you okay with proceeding on the basis of a question or two, if we have any?
Yes, I'm okay with proceeding. Thank you.
Okay, then let's do that. Panel, questions, comments? None? Okay, let's make a decision.
Mr. Chair, I will move to approve this application. I believe it meets the four tests, relatively straightforward. I do not see any conditions.
Is there a second or for Ms. Popovic's motion? Thank you, Mr. Kamork. Thank you, Mr. Kamork. All in favor? That's proved unanimously. Thank you, Ms. Durazzo. Moving on to item 17. Oh, yes. Ms. Bartosik is leaving due to a conflict. So Phil, I presume you are now our new acting deputy secretary treasurer? Is that an adequate description of your new title? Okay. The purpose is to construct a two-story addition above the existing dwelling, a three-story front addition, and a two-story garden suite in the rear yard. The altered dwelling will be converted into a triplex. There are it's a revised application. There were 11 variances. There are now 10. Number 11 has been removed. Oh, no, and number eight has been removed as well. And numbers seven, six, four, three, two, and one have been revised. We have Speaker, I won't forget about you, sir. A little later. We have 31 letters of opposition. We have no agency comments or conditions. And we have Eddie Perez's agent. Mr. Perez, good afternoon.
Hello, good afternoon, Chairman and committee members. My name's Eddie Perez. I'm at 537 Rogers Road. And as you can see, we're presenting a three, a triplex with a garden suite at the rear. I've been ongoing with conversation with my client. He's overseas. He had to go on a family matter. So I've been going back to make some changes. I could run each change individually. Plus, I made another couple of minor changes that will change the application as well. Do you like me to go through each one?
We can't make any changes to what we're looking at right now.
I was gonna omit a couple of variants.
You're gonna remove some variances?
Yeah, I'm gonna remove the couple
Okay, you can remove them, yeah. You just can't change them. All right. So what are you removing?
Okay, I'll go, I'll start off with number one. So number one, the GFA, I had it red marked as to be 77 percent, 402.46. We are gonna change that 392.46 or 75.45 percent. Okay, so that'll change slightly.
No, no, but that's an increase, Eddie. You can't do that.
Oh, we're decreasing it. We're going to, the GFA was 402.46, we're going to 392.46. We're lowering.
Can we entertain a change that's less than what's proposed?
So which set of drawings are we going to be looking at?
Yeah.
And just given all of this, my inclination is to move a motion for deferral so that all of the changes can be properly reflected in a new, in a new notice.
Yeah, I think, especially in light of the fact, we've got 31 people opposed to this, I think they need the time to look at and digest what the differences are. It's gonna get very confusing. They're gonna be commenting on variances as they're set out in the notice. You're gonna say you've changed them. It's just gonna be a bad scene. Giving my age away.
Yeah.
Woodstock was a bad scene. Woodstock, 1969, just in case you know, was a bad scene. Okay, this is, this is like Woodstock. I, I, I support Mr. Kamork's view. I think, Eddie, you need to go back, clean this up, get the notice out, give people time to look at it, then come back.
I'm okay with doing that.
Are you okay with that?
I mean, listen, Eddie, just as a general comment, I think this is a great location for a triplex, but you gotta do it right.
Yeah.
So motion to defer?
Well, no, we're gonna listen to this gentleman. Sir, you're here, so we need to hear from you. Are you agreeable to a deferral of this? We're not considering the merits of the application when I ask you that question. We are, in all likelihood, gonna move and approve a deferral to another date to get this cleaned up. There'll be another notice, another opportunity for you to read, consider, and appear if you wish. So my question to you is, do you agree with a deferral today? No decision today? Deferral to a later date? Yes or no?
Yes, I agree with that. Thank you.
You're good?
Yeah.
I wasn't asking you, Eddie. Okay, everybody that needs to agree to a deferral, if we, if we Oh, yes, sir. Yeah, if you could just identify yourself.
Absolutely. I'm David Janzma.
Yeah, come on up so we can all hear. Yeah, come on up.
Very good, very good. Good morning, Mr. Chair. Good morning, committee members of the Committee of Adjustment. My name is David Janzma, J-A-N-S-M-A. I live at 3909 Bluer Street West, just across the street from our area of interest.
Okay, thank you. So you got that, Olivia, what you need? So we're good? So we need a motion?
Sorry, Mr. Chair, there is one more person online who would like to speak. Do you want to hear from them?
Sorry?
There's one more person online who was registered to speak.
Oh, yeah, yeah, we have to do that.
Mark.
That's right, absolutely.
The other people I do not see online.
So I guess one at a time, eh?
I don't see the other people online, I only see Mark.
Only Mark?
Yeah.
Okay, let's hear from Mark then. Mr. Bonici?
Yes, this is Mark Bonici from 3910 Bluer Street West in Etobicoke.
Okay.
Neighboring property.
And have you been listening in for the last six or seven minutes?
Absolutely.
Okay, good. So you know what we're dealing with right now is the potential to defer this to enable the applicant or the agent to clarify the variances and then come back at a later date after giving notice again.
Yes.
But, so, so what we're dealing with right now is, do you agree with deferring this matter to a later date?
Yes, I certainly agree with deferring it to a later date and I support what the other counselor said in terms of trying to make sure that it's a triplex done properly.
Yep, okay. That's good to know. Good, thank, thank you for that.
Thank you.
So, so we don't have Ms. Stratus, Ms. Groban, or Ms. Gurriel?
They're not online.
They're not online. So now we've heard from everybody we need to hear from. Okay. So let's have a motion.
Okay, I suggested we should do a motion. I'll do a motion, but before I do that, I just want to make a comment and perhaps a question to Mr. Perez.
Yeah.
Since we've got him online. When you look at these drawings, and I believe there was a couple of comments in some of the, a couple of the objection letters, that this really looks like a fourplex, not a triplex. And I don't understand why you wouldn't just call it a fourplex because either one is permitted. Can you perhaps clarify that for us, Eddie? Whether there is an intention here to do a fourplex or whether, you know, a six-bedroom one, one of the suites at six bedrooms is what your client's really looking for?
Yeah, that one was more to deal with larger families that are looking for larger units. Instead of renting a house, they can rent a unit like this one. That was the intent. But I can speak to the client and see if he wants to change it into a fourplex, if that's what he wants to go for. But at this time, he was going for a threeplex.
Okay, we don't really care either way, but just
Yeah.
when you look at the details of the drawings, I mean, you've also have, you also have four mechanical rooms indicated, which makes it look a little suspicious. Just a comment.
Yeah.
Otherwise, I would like to move a motion to defer so that the applicant can properly identify the amendments and come back with a revised application.
Thank you, Mr. Kamork. Is there a second or for Mr. Kamork's motion to defer?
Second.
Mr. Gully, thank you. All in favor? That's unanimous. The item has been deferred to a later date. Yep. I'll just do my little intro here while we're waiting. This is the final item on this morning's agenda, 14044th Street. Purpose is to construct a new ancillary building, a detached garage in the rear yard. There are two variances. This item was deferred on June 12th of this year to enable consultation with Transportation Review. And Transportation Review has now cleared this matter. So there, there are no conditions of approval, no other agency comments. Panel, may I suggest that we treat this as straightforward? Agreed? So our agent is Ryan Dunlop. Mr. Dunlop?
Yes, Mr. Chair.
Hi.
How are you?
So would you be agreeable? We find this quite simple and straightforward. We don't need a presentation. Would you be okay with just answering any questions, if we have any?
Absolutely.
Okay, let's do it that way then. So panel, questions, comments? Then let's have a motion.
Mr. Chair, I'll bring that motion to approve noting the Transportation Review recommends approval at this time and the prior materials originally included a petition of support. No other agency comments that I'm aware of, so I move to approve on that basis.
Thank you, Ms. Popovich. Is there a second or for Ms. Popovich's motion? Ms. Riddick, thank you. All in favor? That's approved unanimously. That concludes this morning's agenda. We probably need at least an hour before we resume. So I guess the options are 12:45 or 1:45 or two?
Why, we can resume at two, just so that we can do a sound check as well.
Two?
Yeah.
Okay. The afternoon will begin at two. Awesome.